On March the 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings laws to the extent necessary to allow for telephone or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for 72 hours. Today, members of the board are meeting in a central location and we do have a forum in attendance. We are meeting by use of Zoom software, which allows two-way communication for members of the public. As would at any in-person meeting, members of the public who follow the instruction on the meeting notice for registering to speak during public comment will be given that opportunity. All other meeting procedures will adhere to the board adopted policies to the extent practicals. An audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be made available to the public at a later date. Zoom software allows for people to view and interact. We apologize in advance for any unforeseen technical difficulties and ask for your patience. If you have questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787, or by email at t o m a at o a g dot texas dot gov. We did not receive any requests to address the board as outlined in the meeting notice. That will take us to the next item on our agenda, which is a discussion action item for purchases over $25,000. Mrs. Barbara.
Good afternoon, President Fitch, Board members, Dr. Trujillo. This first item is for the purchase of equipment grant specifically to serving lines for Nakadoches High School. The student nutrition received a grant for $100,000, which will pay the majority of this cost and the remainder will come out of the child nutrition fund. On the second page, page six, you'll see the tabulation of the RFP. And we have two columns of scores. The price RFP matrix score was just based on price only. And then the total matrix score was taking everything into account. And the, we are recommending going with commercial kitchens for $129,353. Any questions?
Give me one second to catch up on workbook with you, Ms. Barbara.
All right.
I think when I reviewed it, I did have a question. Yes, I see that the bid from commercial kitchens was just slightly different from the A-Smart restaurant supply, but that the total matrix score that commercial kitchens did score higher. Can you shed any light as to the differentiation there?
I can ask Robin Thacker to step in and explain that.
Good evening, good afternoon, President Fitch, Board members and Dr. Trujillo. And I would like to definitely explain that. On our matrix that the district has in those purchasing procedures, we have a matrix of 11 items. And on, when you said A-Smart and commercial kitchens, the difference is, commercial kitchens has a past relationship with the district, so they got the points for that. And then they have an impact on the ability for the district to comply with laws relating to a historically underused business because they are certified as a woman-owned business. So that made them get those points as well.
Nice.
So that's kind of what changes, that's what kind of changes because they, yeah, they were pretty close in the everything else. But those are the two criteria that we choose as a district to put our matrix together to where we can be fair and all that good stuff.
Thank you, Mrs. Thacker. I know oftentimes there's some little, little thing like that in the matrix that will make one stand out above the other, and I appreciate knowing that. So thank you for sharing.
I've purchased some equipment from commercial kitchen in the past.
Okay, well, let me just tell you who has bought stuff from, from commercial kitchens because they advertise here with projects under this very successful company. So successful, they bought out a stainless steel company, so they make their own stainless stuff. So Spring ISD, Spring Branch, Beaumont, Santa Fe, Magnolia, Arlington, Port Arthur, a bunch of Port Arthurs, Pasadena. And I don't know why we couldn't have Nakadoches ISD right there as a little marketing so we could say, hey, if you're going to put this in, how about put our picture in there?
Any additional questions on this item? I'll open the floor for a motion.
President, I move aboard approved the purchase of two serving lines from commercial kitchens in the amount of $129,353,000 and no sense.
Thank you, Mr. Dearborn. Here we have a second. Thank you, Mrs. Thacker. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Just for the record, we did receive word from Reverend Urban while we were covering that item, that he is feeling ill today. So he's unable to join us, but please keep him in your thoughts and prayers that he will feel better soon. I know he said that he left us last week not feeling well, so hopefully he'll be well soon. Right, that's going to carry us to our next item on the workshop, which is a bond construction update. And Mr. Martin?
Good afternoon, President Fitch, members of the board, Dr. Trujillo. Thank you for this opportunity and giving the administration a chance to give you an update on the construction that's going on as a result of the passage of the 2018 bond. With us, we have some special guests and folks that we work with on a daily basis. We have Mr. Ralph Leroux, our Director of Facilities in Construction. We have Mr. Armory Curtis of Curtis Architecture, and we have Mr. Rick Bland of PBK, as well as Cindy Robertson, one of our own. I'm going to go ahead and show my screen. Are you all able to see my screen there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. So I thought the first thing we would take a look at is our schedule. And at your place, as I believe, Ms. Anderson has provided you a paper copy of a revised protected construction schedule. We've been notified here recent by our contractor, WRL, that there is going to be some delays with regards to the Illinois Carpenter project. And it is reflected on this timeline. This timeline was as of yesterday, April 21st. If you will just, if I can direct your attention to the first line, their new carpenter, you see the, the blue. We're, it looks like we're about 60% complete with the school. And the, what our tentative move in date or option one was originally in July of 2021. The contractors inform us now that they will not substantially be complete until September the 14th, or, or between September 14th and September 28th. Wanted to bring that to the board's attention. McMichael Middle School, it is a pretty well on schedule. It comes in about the, in that same timeframe of September. And as you go down through the rest of the projects there, pretty much everything is moved, is flowing on time, including the Nakadoches High School, Malcolm Richter Center of Innovations. We had an opportunity to give the C-Break, some C-Break members a tour this week, earlier this week. The, my, the feedback that I received was that they were very happy with the progress that has been made and looking at the projects were very thrilled, actually, was, was one word that was used. So I'm going to move on from the timeline. Illinois Carpenter Elementary.
Mr. Martin, before you leave the, the timeline, can you give the board some details as to what had been communicated regarding the extension that we're getting on the construction site for Carpenter? The communication you received was from WRL?
Absolutely.
And can you share with them some of the specifics of what they're communicating?
Sure. WRL is stating that we had, or they had 54 days of delays as a result of bad weather, as well as a lack of available labor and materials made possible by, or made impossible by the COVID-19 pandemic. Those were the main two reasons cited in the letter from WRL dated April the 12th.
And you said material delays. Did they, was it just a blanket for having trouble material delays, or did they give anything specific?
They did not name anything specific. It was just material and labor, available labor delays. We, we've, working with the PBK, Mr. Curtis, Mr. Leroux have, we, we've replied with a letter asking them to clarify the delays with regards to the weather, with regards to material, with regards to the labor or lack of labor. And we are awaiting a response.
Okay, and so our, our message to the parents right now of both Carpenter and Mike Moses is, you know, keep us, we'll keep you posted, especially as the summer approaches, but it looks like now the plan would be that they go to their old schools and then as we get into September, there'll be a move.
Well, we wouldn't be September. We'd have to orchestrate a move during that time that had specifically for the Carpenter. When we do that, it's going to be a tremendous move. So some, we don't have even the staff to address the move. So when that time comes, we will talk with the board about some contractual items that might have to do with a company that will help us to relocate.
Yeah.
So we don't tax Mr. Leroux's staff when that comes in. So we may be looking at, just for the parents and those that are out there, that we would do a move at a, at a bigger break, which could, could possibly be at Christmas time. If the contractors that would go with and the move can happen, then we're talking that may even happen during Thanksgiving. We don't know. So we're going to be open to the options. However, whatever move we do make, we've got the contingency of the fact that we've got allowances with our staff. The move is one, and then the staff have to unpack and get ready for the students to arrive back. But our, our goal is that these buildings will not, are not going to stay vacant the full year. Once we get the movement to go forward, then we'll be able to go in, into that.
And, and. Well, if you don't mind, because that was one of the questions I repeated myself. If you're, if, if WRL is saying, well, the building will hand it over between the 14th and 28th of September, which is in play.
Yes.
That's when we can initiate a move. How long does it take to actually take that school from WRL that has handed it over to us to get it ready for kids?
Yeah, until we get a sufficient occupancy, then we, we can't move in until we get that taken care of. And right now, what Mr. Martin is presenting is, they're setting that as a tentative date still.
Right.
So there's some contingency that it, it's, we may have some adjustments. Lord forbid we have any more weather that comes in that keeps us from doing that.
Assuming though that we've got the, the occupancy and everything on the building checks out, physically stocking and prepping that school, because remember when, when, what I'm taking is at the end of September, it would be relative to an empty school? Or, and, and then we still have to move into it? Having never done this before, from my standpoint, that's kind of my question is, how long does it take to do that? Is that, is that a two-month process? Is it a?
You'd be surprised. We've done the move before, I've done with move, and the best thing we could do is, and I know Mr. Martin has brought this up with me, that Mr. Leroux has even talked about, is if we go with a, a, an entity that this is their business, they move, they come in with gondolas, they give us the idea of how to package and what to get ready. It can happen pretty quickly through a company who does that. However, in house, we don't have the personnel, and they can literally, if we did it ourselves, it could take months for us to get in there. But, and we're talking technology, we're talking classroom, and it's a final machine that can be done, but that's, that's a commitment that we'll have to look at is cost effective to make a move. Now, this would be the Carpenter.
Yeah.
Move that we would look at. McMichael would be a little bit different. We would kind of look at that as well for this. It's, it's not a whole school that we're relocating, it's segments over. McMichael, that one there will be a little bit different as a move. Right now, tentatively, the way we're looking at it is, we would move just Carpenter. And as we work with a demographer and we have our meeting with the public and talk about attendance lines and all the things that are there, there will not be any other movements from any other schools, because that has staffing implications as well. So when we say a move during the year, we're only talking Carpenter. Carpenter relocating there and occupying the building for the remainder of the year, which means that that building will be, will not be at full capacity. Now, as we move toward the end of the year, and we, and we made a, we made a decision on boundaries, then that following year, those families that have been impacted will get the communication and they'll know that that's the school they're going to be arriving. Our commitment, when, when we pursued this bond, was to the Carpenter families that attendance zone will remain intact. And we're, we're following through with that commitment to that community, let them know that is, that is their school. However, the capacity of that building is larger than just Carpenter. So there are some adjustments we have to deal with.
But that redistricting wouldn't take place until the fall of '22?
Well, yeah, it wouldn't come into fruition. However, the actual meeting, public meetings, talking with parents.
Right, although that's a process.
That process will be ongoing, and we'll have an opportunity to, to talk about lines and all that. And it's, it's something that we'll, we'll work in, in conjunction with the, our families and with the schools and get notifications, they'll know exactly what's going on as to, as to what we arrived as the, the attendance lines.
Let me, I'm going to interrupt and leave it, so let's go leave it and then come back.
I like to restate what I'm hearing, to make sure I've heard it correctly, and also to clarify for anybody listening. So Carpenter parents, it's going to be school as usual in the fall. And then, and then they don't need to worry.
No.
Sometime, hopefully in the coming school year, there'll be this glorious move to a beautiful new building, and they will all, they will still be part of Carpenter. They don't have to worry about, oh, all of a sudden they're going to be sent somewhere else next year. Yeah. Now, would you please explain to me what you meant by Mike Moses is just in segments?
Mike Moses, because we have contractually obligated staff units and all the sections are at McMichael. Now, what we can do is, we can start segmenting that out, but when we segment out Mike Moses, we're in essence shutting down an entire middle school.
Yeah.
Where Carpenter were not.
Right.
Carpenter removing the entire staff.
Yeah.
And the administration, the students, everybody over to a new building. And what we're going to look at is that they evaluate with certification issues and all things that go on with Mike Moses. Mike Moses is becoming an elementary school, which means that we'll spend that next year evaluating certifications, talking to staff and seeing who wants to, or has the endorsements to remain as part of Mike Moses as a transition to an elementary, but also allow the administration at Mike Moses to really get the dynamics of the team and allow our staff, plenty of opportunity during that year to evaluate their commitments to Nakadoches if they're going to remain here. Because really what's happening is, we have a full staff that's there and we'll be able to accommodate most of the folks over there. But through attrition, there may be some folks that are going to make other decisions to either go to the high school level or, or move over to the new, to the new combined middle school. So Mike Moses, even though the completion date will be there, those wings will not be occupied, because that requires us to, transportation needs, adjusting, because some transportation is going to have to happen with kids, staffing, the commitment we have to our staff, and we have a contractual obligation with all our staff that they are going to be working in. But we don't want to move and, and create a little more chaos. Theirs will not be glorious if we did that. Carpenter will be a glorious opportunity. So we want to have a little more control as to what that may look like, addressing the issues with transportation, addressing issues with staffing, in that dynamics. Mr. Martin, am I covering that basically, like what we've talked about?
Yes, sir, Dr. Trujillo. And if I may add, there's also a renovation component to Mike Moses, to renovate it from a middle school to an elementary.
Okay, so, parents that have children in Mike Moses, or parents who have incoming six brothers who have been told they would go to Mike Moses, next year is same, same old same old, they go to Mike Moses, because we're going to slowly make this transition into McMichael.
Exactly.
Okay, great. So parents, now where is that?
My question, my question goes back to the timeline for the completion of Carpenter and Mike Moses. In your discussion with the contractor, they're saying that they hopefully will have it done by September. But my concern is, you know, August starts the hurricane season, and they're saying it's going to rev up this year. Has there been a contingency plan that they cannot finish it for September, another date that they've given because of the weather?
To answer that question, Mr. Montori, no, sir, there has not been contingency planned. The contract was already gone beyond the contracted timeframe that, that was in the original contract track. So what they're asking for is an amendment to, to get to September. So they've, they've not asked for any more time than the end of September at this point.
And did we build a penalty clause in there if, if the project was not completed on time?
Yes, ma'am. We did.
Mr. Martin, this would probably be a good time if Mr. Bland or Mr. Army can step in and let us know. This board has options as we get to the completion time. If we can, if they're there, they can answer some of these questions that our board presidents asked.
Yeah, this is, this is Rick Bland. Army, I'm sorry about starting before you. This is Rick Bland. First of all, thank you for inviting me to this meeting, Madam President, trustees, and Dr. Trujillo. There are clauses in the contract for penalties. We have actually two claims or notices, delay notices from WRL. Both of them have been rejected as far as using instruments of the contract to reject the delay claim for weather due to the fact that there was a weather days that were allowed in the contract, and we have not exceeded those severe weather days, as well as we've rejected the latest claim due to COVID based on lack of backup. And we've, as, as Mr. Martin said, we've written a letter back asking for additional backup. So at this point, that claim is rejected as well. Now, that does not change the date that they would, that their projected date for substantial completion. All that does is, it puts the district in a position to protect themselves for any liquidated damages or other issues related to the contract.
President, considering all of those possibilities, would it be more realistic to say we should be finalized for January 22nd starts, rather than in the middle of this full year?
Well, and I'm going to defer a little bit to Dr. Trujillo here and say that it may even still be too early to project that.
Yeah, I, I think, based on what we heard from Mr. Bland, and also I'm sure Army has some opinions in there. We had a hard fast date that it was going to be completed. And what we need to do is not accept anything, allow PBK and allow them to, to evaluate. We're not in the construction business, and so if they're saying there's a shortage of material, PBK has millions of dollars of projects happening across the country. And so they have a really good understanding is, is that truly an issue? Also, is shortage of labor, is that truly an issue? And so we hold fast to the date. If we were to adjust this, then we're telling them, okay, yeah, that's fine, well, we can adjust it to January. And, but then what happens if it goes beyond January? And so we have a set date that's there, and in visiting with Mr. Bland, at the tail end of it, is whenever we can get and figure out what are the options for the board, based on the, on the claims that are, that are being presented.
Yes.
Because some, some of the information that I've read also talks about the beginning of the project, that some of it dealt with not getting, you know, the, the, the permission to begin and other things that, there were other issues that were there. So our goal is, we have a bar here that says when it should have been done. Realistically though, we're going to have to work on planning for our parents, letting them know well in advance, what does it look like? Does it look like we're within 45 days? And then start talking about what that may look like. That's why to our parents at Mike Moses, we're, we're holding them fast until we can make a move, and that has to do with personnel. Carpenter, if we were doing something and it was more than Carpenter, then it would be problematic. But Carpenter, we're looking at a fast and hard move just for Carpenter. And what we, what we owe is notification with plenty of information to our families to let them know when this happens. The negotiations of fulfilling this contract on the timeframe that they've given, all of that, is I'm going to defer that to the guy who says I'm visiting with Mr. Bland at PBK, and also with Army and Ralph, because they're having, I like to use the conversation of they're having great dialogue, exclamation point, great dialogue, on leaning in and figuring out what is it that's truly going? Because they, they're even mentioning in a document that they may get finished earlier, if they're able to get the labor force. So it's a moving target that, that is on a piece of paper that's there. And I appreciate the fact that Mr. Bland said that they've reviewed it and they've denied it. It still doesn't negate the fact that we're not going to be able to move in because this stuff completed. But it allows this board at the very end, actionable items that we can pursue based on the contract that we've got. And I would be very cautious to, just say, you know what, let's, let's adjust it, let's accept it, let's move the date, because then that date can become some moving target.
I clearly understand where I take my book at the shop, they say Wednesday, but Thursday I checked, they said, well, I was busy or something happened. So based on that, by the final inspection and certification, which takes a lot of time, so we go room to room, bathroom to bathroom, floor to floors, and so on. And they tell us that 28th of September, I, I can guarantee you that it goes far beyond that.
And I would like to, I know, Mr. Martin, you said that Mr. Curtis was on the line for us. I'd love to hear his, any additional information. Mr. Martin, you said that Mr. Curtis was on the line for us. I'd love to to hear his, any additional information he may. Be able to offer to us.
There I am. Yeah, I think I think the conversation as it's been going on is is straight on. I think the main. Concerns or the main issues that we're trying to bring forth is that this is happening right now and it needs to be used as a planning tool. For the for the district and for the board to understand what the reality in the field is becoming. So. Yes, this is a a fluid situation with Carpenter. And and you know, that's a major project and and I keep telling. People that the hardest part of a project like that is the end. And getting everything tidied up, working order, and it takes a while. So. Even though we might have a substantial completion date contractually, there's always a punch list issue. Technology moving in, you know, all of the equipment being set up and it takes time. So. I I think everything else that has been discussed is is straight, straight on.
Thank you for that, Mr. Curtis. I see Mr. LaRue standing there as well. Ralph, would you have anything to add?
No, I certainly concur. I think we're we're, everybody's on the same page. We need to just let this play out a little bit more where it's too early to try to force any decisions. Don't really want to stand over top of the contractor anymore than we already are. Because we're getting into that finish work and we really want to make sure we're going to do this right.
That would, that would be one of the concerns that ran through my head here is is you don't want to. You don't want the contractor to rush through and not do a a good job.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to come across at this point punitive and 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 cause any, any rush.
One other thing I want, as long as we're talking about the schedule, because the schedule needs to be taken in as a whole, you know, the bond. The bond program is not just Carpenter necessarily. It's it's everything that's on this list. And so the the time that we're going to need next summer for the renovation of Fredonia. And it's it's transformation into a pre-K as well as Moses being renovated. That's kind of in the greater scheme of of how to think about. Ultimately where kids are going and when they are going there.
That's, that's a great point. Ralph, can you speak a little bit to the board? You've, we've talked about the possibility, you don't have the staff to make the this big move because everything is going to be choreographed. And you've made a suggestion of possibly going with a moving company that would be able to to help us relocate it. Is is that pretty factual?
Yeah, I I think that's, you know, particularly if you're looking at Carpenter to Carpenter. You know, the the building is going to be furnished. So we're not moving furniture, we're just moving teachers' belongings. If there's enough time on the front end for technology to get in there and get the school and the network set up in advance. You know, there's. You're you're going to have to figure out though when the teachers are given time to. The box up all their materials and we know the teachers have an abundance of materials. And then they're going to have to have time on the other end to unpack. So, you know, the. It's as far as moving schools go because there's no furniture, no significant furniture involved. It's it's not a horrible move.
Mr. LaRue, do you? I mean, I know it's a little bit early, but do you or have you had any conversation about what kind of costs we're talking about, the moving companies?
No, moving companies. Have not been contacted yet. We've not reached out. We really need a timeframe to. For scheduling to to see if we can even fit into their schedule.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to jump over for a second, Mr. Curtis and Mr. LaRue and and talk about. The the move, the transition between Mike Moses and McMichael, and I see it on the the schedule there. And I can totally follow what Dr. Trillo has said is, once we start students at Mike Moses. In the fall, we're contractually obligated to that staff that, you know, they'll they'll stay in place. But does that give you enough time? You know, you've got it on the schedule now that basically. I read it, it says May. I assume when school closes. You would hit the ground pushing hard to get that renovation completed in time for school to start. Is is that practical is my first question. And then. Are there areas of that campus that you could begin working on prior to that date that might help make that more fair?
Yes, we in fact intend on, you know, this summer at Mike Moses, we're doing. Roof and HVAC. And then I hope as soon as we get these projects kicked off. We would have time enough to work to work with playground company and fence company. We can do some of that outside work through the winter. And then in the summer, just have whatever we have to decide to do inside the classrooms. And then the furnishings need changed out for the smaller children.
So your message there is it's going to be, what I think I'm inferring or hearing you say is it's going to be hard, but. It's doable.
Yes, our summer schedules are all very tight. That one is probably one of the tightest. As is Fredonia, but I think they're doable.
Would you like, would you like greater complications? If we're going to move all of Carpenter, new Carpenter, that's going to be the pre-Ks. Well, why can't we just move the pre-Ks to Fredonia to their space? Because that's where they're going.
Well, we don't know that. We, when we're doing this, we're going to evaluate programs, we're going to evaluate locations. So that aspect of it is ongoing. So moving something. What it is is, and I know this is for our parents, we want to make this transition. As it's kind of like ripping a Band-Aid off. There's not going to be any comfort. There's going to be discomfort. There's going to be the new learning that happens. My goal to each one of the parents that are out there in our family, in our communities, is that we're evaluating everything. So when we make the move and we're making the adjustments. We're not ripping multiple Band-Aids off and people are feeling discomfort after discomfort. So when we make a move and we're doing that, and I don't want it out in the public saying, oh, well, Dr. Trillo said we're we're relocating pre-K. I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, we're going to evaluate. The optimal location for the services that we have for programs that are in this district. And this is a great time to do this. From every service that we provide so we can streamline it and grow our programs, develop our programs that we have. So. We we could do some things like that, but also that requires staff. That would have to be relocated and and Jesus. So I just want to make sure that when we make this move. I appreciate what Ralph and and Army just said is, they're starting with some of the projects this summer. Knowing that it's going to be completed almost eighteen months later or twelve months later. And I want to give them plenty of room to do the things that we need to do. Without having to complicate it because then there's some needs that may have to happen if we did move pre-K. Do we have the bathroom facilities to accommodate that? Because they have the little bitty toilets. And so all the all the intricate parts and I I I would hope our family would appreciate that, our teachers would appreciate that. Is that I know there's going to be discomfort. I know there's going to be some folks that are not going to be happy with the what we're doing, but if we do it at one moment at one time. Then it's easier to get past and then we can move on and and do the amazing wonderful things that Nakadochus I C is going to be doing in the near future.
You know, and I'd like to say also, this reminds me. Of fall of this past school year, when we were full, we even pushed through start day. And I I feel like the majority of everyone in N I S D appreciated that, that we didn't get in and then go, oop, you know, this isn't going to work. Oh dear, now we got to do this. To wait and evaluate everything and go in when we feel like we've got the final answer. And to make a move like this with Carpenter and combining our middle school. And waiting, that makes so much more sense than to get in halfway and then go, oh, well, now we got to fly here, you know.
We we haven't really spoke much about the 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 third leg on that, the big three projects here and and that is the N H S C T E addition. It appears to be a little behind as well, not as far behind as the others, but slightly behind. But if I'm, if I'm interpreting the chart correctly, you still anticipate that it'll be finished in time. For those classes to relocate over the summer to allow for construction renovation on the existing C T E bays. Am I correct?
Yes, that's, as far as we can tell, C T E as a as the new building construction. Should be pretty close to substantial completion in about four to five weeks. And that will then start that whole other action in place about moving into it. Moving out of the existing shops area and rolling into the existing building for the renovation phase.
One item that is important for the community to know is that there were commitments that we had had with the community when we barged to the new C T E building. However, we want to make sure that it's clearly articulated that we have a little bit of a pause. Because we were in constant dialogue about what we could do in that C T E building with the commitments that we've had. With entities in the community. However, when we take the current bays in the high school. Where the auto trades and all the welding, all of that is in there, that's all part of the renovations. So what we've got to do is know that when we start school next year, those programs will not be in those bays. They will be in the new C T E building. So when folks see that we're occupying it. And I just want to make sure the community understands and they're saying, wait a minute, they they being N I S D said we would be able to use it. That is the plan and we're going to be able to develop some great partners within the community. But until we finish the upgrade of the high school. And be able to take the current programs that will have to be temporarily housed there. And move them back to the wonderful facility that that we're going to create for them. Then at that point, we could start fulfilling that commitment that we've said. To our community, we're going to do, we support and really appreciate the support of our community with that new C T E building. But once again, we have a little bit of a wait time that's happening there to create some swing space. For our students. Our obligation is our kids at the high school, making sure their programming continues. And it is still a quality that they can provide until they move back into the location. I just wanted to make sure. That our committee understands when we make that swing and we move it over, that's why we're not. We're going to be real protective of that C T E building during those months. That basically takes us into November. Based on the timeline that's here, so. Yes, sir.
Or existing C T E buildings, what are the priorities?
The existing? Well, Army, could you, can you speak to the bays? Which ones are, we're renovating all the way through there. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, basically from the the auto shop all the way through the welding shop. And the wood shop areas all the way down to what is kind of considered the architectural drafting room. That whole section there is what's being renovated starting this summer.
You know, current C T E that's not impacted, they will continue in the building where they're at. As long as it's been deemed safe for student traffic and student movement. If we feel like we're in the in the remodeling, it it puts it puts. A little bit, puts the kids in a in a procure, although it's a difficult situation. With regards to construction, we will have to evaluate some of those programs. But I'm going to trust the conversation with Ralph to figure out which areas we may have to. Really relocate a program for that.
Mr. Curtis, how high are the ceilings in those existing C T E programs?
Yeah, the shops, they're probably twenty, roughly eighteen to twenty feet.
Is it too high to be heated and air conditioned?
The for, well. It was an alternate though. There was an ultimate at the at one point in the design to air condition. Some of those spaces and it got pulled for for budgetary reasons, but they are heated and ventilated otherwise. It's just welding and auto shop, I think, that are not quote air conditioned.
Well, and I I I I hear what what you're saying, but I'm going to tell you, I worked in construction. And I don't want any of our seniors thinking they're working in an air-conditioned shop when they get to the real world. Because so I I will step in and say, although the idea is wonderful, I would love it. But I didn't work in an air-conditioned shop. And I I want to make sure that our our companies that are out there know that we're going to get the kids in the most realistic environment. To get the skill set that they need. Because I've touched red iron before, that'll burn your hand if you don't have gloves on. And sweat in the shop to sit there. We might give them a couple fans. I don't know who fans. But.
If you want to give a comparison, you know, when we did transportation, we did not air condition those shop spaces. Kind of compare apples to apples to real world conditions, that might be one.
Now, Army, I don't know, this this is something we might consider is I know we have this in the new C T E building. When we put the garage door in, we want, we probably don't want to limit ourselves on the opportunities that we might be able to do. So. We might be a little bit bigger on the garage door so that we might be able to service something other than a vehicle, a car. And in in future programming that we may need to look at it. So you and I can talk some more about. That's just a chance minor, but you know, the, we have the big semi truck gate. If we had twenty feet in there, there's some, some big rigs can. That are not so big, come in there, maybe we work on with some kids, learning how to do some things with some vehicles, programming ones.
Yeah, we could take an assessment of that. I know that in the past, they've worked on some pretty big trailers out of that welding shop. So. We can take a look at that and see what its capacities might be.
Is cosmetology and any other areas, are they going to have some paint or anything or are they just not going to be touched at all? Are there areas that we're not involving in the bond that are still C T E?
Yeah, cosmetology and kind of the initial healthcare areas around that are not under this scope.
It sounds like cooking as well.
Right, tho- those home ec type shops are not under this scope. There's that that last hallway. That leads out is kind of the demarcation line where where the work is going on.
The brown hall, yeah. I just remembered that you could have get lost finding auto mechanic because it was like, and down this dark hole and you went, I need to go down there?
Yeah, that'll all be taken care of really. That whole wayfinding and and hallway circulation will really be. Well, well thought out in in this renovation. So it makes it a lot easier to to get into those rooms.
All right, Mr. Martin, I think we went on a a bit of a rabbit trail there with, as you were talking about the timeline. I'm going to kick it back to you to continue your presentation.
Thank you, Madam President. The the rest of the presentation is. Really looking at just some progress of the different construction sites and the new M L and Carpenter Elementary. You've probably seen some of these photographs. This is back January twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-one. Same date here. A lot of these are posted on our website as we continue to try to keep our community updated. With the progress of of these projects. This was April the first of twenty twenty-one. There's quite a bit more progress that. Uh, this was April the first of twenty twenty one, there's quite a bit more progress that had been made at, uh, M Line Carpenter. Uh, you can start to see some brick. A lot of brick actually being moved. Uh, this was April twentieth, and this was the backside, this was, uh, a site. Or a side that actually the Seabreak got to see on that day. These spaces on the backside of, uh, new, the new M Line Carpenter.
Now that's a library, right?
Yes, that is the library area.
Can't wait to see what, uh, that's just going to be beautiful.
A lot of natural light there. Uh, the Malcolm Richter Center for Advanced Careers and Innovation. Uh, the Seabreak, uh, on Tuesday got to go inside of the, uh, this center and it is massive. It is a massive space, it looks really wonderful. This was on January the twenty ninth. These photos, still January the twenty ninth, April the first. April the first, uh, this is the entrance to the building, main entrance. On your left. This is the large bay door area that we talked about, uh, an eighteen wheeler being able to, uh, drive into. On April the twentieth, um. See some duck work going in or already placed in there, they're finishing up the walls. McMichael Middle School. Uh, this is the long wing that has been added, this is on January twenty nine. Classroom areas. I believe if I'm not mistaken, this is a part of the storm shelter.
They did a real good job matching the brick.
I did a very good job of matching the brick. These, uh, these are the classrooms, uh, six classrooms per wing that were added on the backside of the existing wings. Uh, this was April the twentieth, again, the Seabreak, uh, team got to, uh, look at these sites as well. On the right-hand side there, that is the expansion, uh, you see still work there, that's the expansion of the cafeteria area there at McMichael. The, uh, left-hand picture is, uh, an expansion of classrooms, uh, to the existing building. District Support Center is complete. This is, uh, again, the spirit lobby. Just some conference rooms here, a waiting area on your right. Seabreak did get to, uh, tour the, uh, new district support center as well. And Madam President, with, uh, your permission, I would like to now yield the floor to, uh, Mrs. Barbara for the remainder of our presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Martin. Before we move to Mrs. Barbara, any additional questions for Mr. Martin? All right, you're done. Thank you for your time, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Ms. Fitch.
Okay, um, I believe you have some, uh, printouts as well as, um. In the board book. But would you also like me to turn my screen?
Yes, please, for the, for the public, if I want to say, please.
Are you seeing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, so this first sheet is, um. The document just showing where we are. I took a little bit of a different approach with it this time, um, and I'll go through it. So the top part is our completed projects so far. And you'll see the bond budget, what we spent as of March thirty first, and then whether it was over or under budget. And of our completed projects, you'll see we've had a savings of eight hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars. The second section is projects with contracts. So what we are comparing there are the bond budget. And, uh, next to it is the contract price plus the soft cost. The next column is what we have spent as of March thirty first. And the final column is how much we are over, under, or over the bond budget. So that is comparing the first two columns. So we see that, um. We have savings in transportation and in the Burke Center. Um, but we have, um, overruns in the Carpenter rebuild, uh, as well as the CTE, um, addition. Anyway, going all the way down to the bottom, we've got a three point one million dollar deficit in projects with contracts. The next section is future projects and on these projects, I am assuming they come in budget. Based on the bond budget, and of course, we know that they will not come in budget, they may be under, they may be over, we don't know. So. Uh, going down to the bottom of the page, the second to the last line item is interest earned as of March thirty first. One point five million. That brings us to a deficit of one point two million. And when I said I made a little bit of a change, I took a different approach is, in the past, I have had the press box. On pause, so there was no, uh, so that, the, that was shown as savings before. I'm showing this as if we went ahead with the press box at the bond budget.
Very good. Thank you for that. I like this format a lot, Ms. Barbara.
Thank you very much.
I, I keep, uh, playing with it, just trying to find the best way to, uh, convey what's actually happening without, uh. Being too convoluted there, because we have so many projects and, uh, so many different stages.
Ms. Barbara, before you leave this document, can you go to the very top? And I'm looking at completed projects, just so you can clarify with our board. These are projects that have been completed for the, uh, budget, the bond budget that was, uh, established. And if you have a column there that says spent as of, is that the total expenditure for that?
Yes, yes.
Or to the right, you have an over and under, an under-over bond budget. Uh, these funds are continuing to sit there. For instance, if I look at the Carpenter land purchase. We're sitting at six hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-six cents. That line item amount is still sitting right there.
Yes, 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 and that's what we will continue to go through. And, um, what I'm going to present to you today are some methodologies that, uh, we want you to consider. We will bring these back at the next board meeting for you to take action on. These are going to be methodologies for how we can move forward in using any savings we have towards, uh, future projects and, and, uh, ongoing projects.
So basically what we're doing is trying to, uh, you know, a- address the books that we have. So if you continue to look at the bottom dollar and it looks like it's continuing to be depleted. Well, it's not a true depletion because we have, uh, monies that are still set up and sitting there with a completed project. So the authority is finding out from the board, what is, can we, can we take that line item and, now that it's completed? And then, uh, the ink is dry, can we take that, those funds and redirect them in areas so that you can see a true number? That's it. Correctly said, that's what I'm.
Yes, so I would like to jump to the, uh, final page, I want to skip the next two pages. And jump to the final page, that says bond budget adjustment procedures. I have put this in a step, uh, format to show what, how we would. Use any savings in the future, or from, you know, at your pleasures as projects are completed. So first of all, the very first, um, step would be interest earnings would go to completed projects with deficit balances as of. And this is as of March thirty first twenty-one, until deficit is clear or earnings are exhausted.
So, so, I, I want to define that and make sure, I'm going to kind of apply that. So you're saying. You would take interest earned and apply it toward the TJR HVAC deficit?
Well, the, what I'm going to move to next, we're going to, is a prioritized list.
Okay.
So, once we get our prioritized list, the interest earnings would go to the top priority.
Okay.
Uh, the next step would be interest earnings to the highest priority project over bond budget until deficit is clear or earnings are exhausted. So yes, you are right, and, and if we would, what you said is correct, just not ready to move there yet.
Okay, sorry.
Number three would be upon completion of a project, savings go to the highest priority. Project over budget until deficit is clear or savings are exhausted. Number four, if no savings are available from any bond project, funds will be taken from the local capital projects fund. Until deficit is clear or the fund is exhausted. That is that fund I created that right now only has about ninety-nine thousand dollars in it.
Is that, is that in the budget or outside of the budget?
It is outside of the budget.
Okay.
Number five, the final step would be if all bond funds, interest earnings and local capital project funds are exhausted. Funds may be transferred for the general fund upon approval by the board.
So.
Oh, my question is, if that occurs, do we have any idea? What, what amount we might be looking at to have to come up with?
Well, that, as time goes on, yes. So this is sort of, we would not jump automatically to number five.
Okay.
Uh, that would be at the end of getting near the end of the projects.
Okay.
When we know more information.
Am I, am I thinking correctly if I say if there is any money left from the bank, a bond? And also if we earn any interest left, all of those would be spent on a bond project anyways, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And if it's short, we have to get.
Right, so way down the line, when we're getting near the end, would be if, if we, uh. Have run out of the bond funds, then we would go to the board with. With, um, what we would need. So we would never do number five without board approval.
And the wonderful planning, uh, my predecessor, Alton Frayley and his board, were able to put together is a capstone where put all the projects together. And because of that, uh, is why we're able to go in there and take funds and say, okay, this one came in under budget, let's put it over here. And if you recall, back in that November board meeting of a year ago, well, yeah, a year ago. That was the explanation is taking funds and being able to package it as a capstone where you have all the big projects there and be able to utilize it in that way. So you're seeing, now you're seeing the fruition of that, that, that pre-planning, that dialogue of being able to do this.
Is local capital projects like a savings?
I was about to ask if you would remind us where the funds came from that are going into the local capital projects fund that you created.
So last year, we budgeted to transfer. Funds. Of two hundred thousand dollars into the technology fund from savings from the telephone. The savings from the telephone were only about one hundred thousand dollars that go to technology, which left an excess of the budget of about. It was just a little under a hundred thousand dollars. So rather than just having it fall into fund balance and, and because it was budgeted to transfer. I created this fund to scroll, sort of to scroll away money for, uh. A potential use with the capital, uh, with the bond project, since we were seeing that, uh. Projects were going over budget. And I would like to continue to do that at, if we see we have savings that we can move over to the, for that purpose.
Can I? I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna restate just to make sure I'm clear. Uh, so. But there are times when you're asking us to fund something and we approve it. And then it comes out that we have saved money and we didn't have to need all of that, that you put in for a project or whatever. You were starting to put that at excess, that savings into what you call the local capital projects, is that right? And then it is like a savings account kind of, and.
Well, yes, it's another, it's another fund and it's a fund that is specifically for capital projects, so it's. It can, the money sits there regardless, whether it's in fund balance or in fund balance in general fund. Or fund balance in the capital projects fund, it's still in a fund balance, being unused. It's just in a diff, it's rather than being in general fund, fund balance, it's in a capital fund, fund balance.
It's which box we're taking it out of?
Yes. Our money is money, bond money is bond.
Yes. But then, now I understand where that money came from.
It just seems like a show where you're saying that, that you're applying somewhere else, instead of just, you know, right back, back to many.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I did, I, I did that just sort of to, um. It can get lost in general fund, fund balance. It's easier to get lost there. And when I say lost, it's just because it's in such a huge amount. And so this, this protects it in the capital, uh, projects fund. But can also, if ever needed, could be moved back into general fund, that, that, that would not be an issue. It's in fund balance, just in a capital projects fund balance.
And for the public here, for them, for, for, for clarification, it's full transparency on looking at funds. Rather than taking a group of, of monies and putting it into, uh, the big pot of general fund and then wondering where did it go? This way it sits there and if, if we have a person that's wondering, you had a, a capital project that you were doing and it came in under budget, what happened to those funds? So we can literally point to the dollar amount, say this is what it is. And I, I, I don't like the term throwaway money, it's for reinvesting it in other projects that need a priority. And so when we look at that, we could take the funds, uh, and the public knows that we're not putting it in, into general fund now, all of a sudden, if we needed to. Uh, Lisa needed, uh, to get the funds and we came to the board. Then we would have to go into fund balance, you have to look at it and define it, whereas here you can say, this is a local capital project. It's here, this is the amount we have, and then we can actually move that over, uh. And if the need were to arrive, then if we needed to go to fund balance, then you would clearly understand that we exhausted that local project, uh, monies that were there.
And I can't tell you many times we've gone, now, where did that savings come from? And we've got to all get back to you, you know, like you know, but I think it was this, this, and I think you kind of say this from how it does.
Oh, you have this to do that. If, if I'm understanding, if that means it's really simplified, I appreciate that.
I, I think a good way to look at this, we were so underwater with capital needs, with roofs and HVACs and buses. And other big ticket items, and we've been slowly working on that and the, the bond is helping us to catch. But we still have a lot of capital improvement projects that are, well, how do we get that?
But we still have a lot of capital improvement projects that are, well, how do we get that funded? Well, we just take this little bit, save it, and because we still have capital improvement projects that are needed. And this is the way we can do it without carving it out of somewhere else in the budget. We want to keep that money, particularly like construction, we don't want to touch that. So that way, we're, we're kind of forcing ourselves, but that's what we have to do this without, without any big problems. But if there are big problems, then that's, we're here to solve that, we're here to work on that.
Ms. Barbara, I want to offer, I want to offer that when I was preparing for this meeting and saw these five bullet points that you put together, I was so excited to see this because you clearly defined it. You've defined it in these bullet points. It's very transparent, the public will be able to understand exactly how this money is, is being moved around within the bond budget. I just really want to applaud you and, and thank you for the clarity in, in committing this paper.
You're welcome, and I, I would like to show you it in action.
Yes, please.
Okay, so that, I'm going to move up to this spreadsheet here shown. So here we see, we have the first column, original bond budget. And this is my, what I determined as priority. This is for you to be considering and will be taken to as an action item in the next board meeting to determine whether, what priority we want our projects in. So what I did was I, since we have projects that are finished, they become our first priority. So we have our completed projects here. We have, let's look at Carpenter land purchase. We have, we had a bond budget of one point five million. We spent nine hundred and five thousand and we have six hundred and thirty-four thousand left. So here's the proposed budget adjustment of moving that six hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars. I'm taking that, all of these items here, these are all of our savings totaling eight hundred and nine thousand dollars. And moving it to our next highest priority project, which would be the Carpenter rebuild and moving it into that. Now you're seeing two point three million because of the interest. There's, the interest is, is up here. So interest plus the savings here add up to two point three million and we're putting it towards our highest priority project. Now we've exhausted all our funds so far. So we can't move on to the next step yet until we have some more savings or some more interest. Anyway, we're adjust, so if you look at this Carpenter rebuild, right now, the original bond budget is twenty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. If we apply that adjustment, then going forward, this becomes the new budget, twenty-three point six million. So see, we're still in a deficit because our estimated costs are twenty-six million. So, but this is the first step in moving funds in there to complete the Carpenter budget, the Carpenter rebuild.
And with Barbara, that, that particular construction project is, of all the projects, is the one that needs our attention. That's how you arrived at that being a priority.
Yes, yes, and, and again, this is my list. I'm willing to take recommendations from you. If you want to move things in a different order, then we can do that. But once that list is decided, we'll be bringing it as an action item at the next board meeting so that we know what the priority is, who gets the money next.
Sure, but I now would agree with your assessment. I don't, I don't think that there's anyone in this community that disagree that Carpenter is absolutely the priority project. So do you all agree?
Does anybody recall how we went from twenty-one point two to twenty-six point three million? Is that five million, over five million, is that, is that a lot of that soft cost or what? Why did it, why isn't that much more?
Oh, you, you hit a sore button for me, but Dr. Trio, you want to respond to that one?
Well, I'd have to have Lisa pull up the document, I don't know if she has it or Michael has it that was presented. And it, it has the actual number that's of how it arrived to that. Lisa, do you have, do you have access to that document?
Is it the, well, it's our, it's our soft, it's our soft costs which have not changed, it's the construction cost. It's what we, the board adopted or the board accepted as the contract cost.
And.
I'm not exactly sure which document you're talking about, though.
But so the, the twenty-six is the guaranteed maximum. It's not going to be any more than this.
Yeah.
True, yes.
But we built it with all of these projects, these are all clumped together.
To respond to Dr. Roman, it was estimated construction cost was seventeen million, five hundred and fifty thousand. And then estimated projects are three million, eight hundred and sixty-five, that was estimated, it's not.
Madam President, if I, I may address Dr. Roman's question.
Yes, sir.
Much of the five million dollars. If you recall, these, it's really not just the Carpenter project. It's the combination of all three projects, the capstone project. A lot, the majority of the overage there is attributed to the tornado shelters that were required by city code.
And weren't there additional classrooms that needed to be added as well, Michael?
There, there was six additional classrooms that needed to be added that had an estimated cost of, of about two point four million dollars to McMichael.
We had those security things added on for tornado shelter that became law after we, after the bond was done and then they, we drew up the plans, then they changed the law and then we had to replay, redo the plans. So that's, that's probably part of that. And then it took us extra time to build in that extra security for the children's safety. So I think that might be, now it's coming back to me. I think that might be where some of this and that extra soft cost came in. And COVID, of course, added on for this.
And if, and I'm just going back by memory, some of the conversation that Mr. Fraley was visiting with Board is through savings, we'll be able to readdress some funds and address possibly that, the shortfall that's there. And that's when you see that amount that Lisa's moved over is a portion of that, but still it doesn't cover it. Hopefully, as we progress and we move forward, you'll see additional crops, savings that will also build with interest, will take that number down even further. One thing exciting is that the concession stand is in there. Because we made that, and at one point, as for, as before we were in here, we wanted to hold to the commitment that we said that we were going to do something with that press box. And we heard that loud and clear, and that's why you'll see it on the item that's there. Whereas before, it was giving a, a false sense of security that we were saving, but we weren't fulfilling that. And we wanted to make sure for full transparency, that's, that's a line item that we're looking at, that will happen there with, with that. Statement. I'm sorry, Mr. Martin, you were saying?
Mr. Dr. Rio, I was, I was done, I was completely, those, those were the, that's the majority of the deficit there.
Right, so I wanted to segue that into, so we've got that one point two, five million deficit here, which is flows through to this page. And look at some possible ways of bringing those funds up. We, again, I have that local capital projects fund of ninety-six mil, thousand. We can move some spending that we've done out of the, the bond fund into our general fund. Another way we can do is honor the press box. We just not go the full-blown project we said before and I'm not even sure where this number came from, but just scale down the press box, still honor that we would go in and do something with that press box this, at a lesser scale. We can pull the DEF Ed Priority Maintenance Project out and sell that building. The, I came up with the seventy thousand, two hundred because that is what we paid for that. We can sell the Student Support Center, that number came from what we paid for it. But what I wanted to really point out to you here is this is something that is up in the air right now, but we, the federal government gave funds to school districts to help with the COVID problems that we're facing. The state of Texas has not released those funds yet. They are still holding on to them. What we don't know is will they give them to us? If they do give them to us, are they going to turn around and take back other funds like they did last time? We don't know. But part of those, those funds can be used towards HVAC systems, which we have in our bond. We have two, little over two million dollars project for the high school HVAC. If we were able to pull those funds, pull that out of the bond, pay for it with ESER funds, that would be a huge savings for us in helping us complete our projects. But again, that is very unknown because we don't know what the state of Texas is going to do yet.
Well, and I'd like to take this opportunity for anybody that's out there that's looking at this, make sure they understand that this board is looking, taking this serious issue with regards to the ESER funds and wants the state to release those funds. We're joining hands with other districts across the state and we're saying those federal funds have been designated to count the districts and let the local decision be made on how we're going to spend those funds. So I want to be able to go on the record to say, as superintendent here in Nacogdoches, and I, I, without speaking for the board, they're aware of the concern that we have with regards to that. And this is only a portion of that in order to address the deficit that's happening academically with our kids, the social, emotional needs that we have for not only our kids but our teachers. We cannot do it with the, the sole budget that we've been allocated. This has been provided for us to provide for our kids and our communities and our families. And going to stand united and demanding that we get the funding that was owed to not only Nacogdoches but to every school district to meet these needs. So I'm cautiously, once again, optimistic, but I'm leaning in with the fact that we're going to join in partnership with other school districts. We can't do this. We can't do this without the commitment of what the, of the federal funds that they said that we're going to send to us at the local level. Yes, this puts a little dent in what we're doing here, but the greater amount is what's going to happen in the classrooms for our teachers and supporting our teachers' instruction week for the mammoth work that they're going to have to do this next full year for the academic fiber kids. So I just want to make sure I put that out there on the record, so.
Yes.
Once Leslie, they can hear loud and clear that we are asking for the ESER funds to be released.
Right, so. So it, it's, I can't find it anymore, I can't find it on TEA, but initially I saw that our allocation was going to be about eleven million dollars. So I'm not talking about using all those funds towards an HVAC system, just, just a portion of that. But again, the state has to give us that money. Another I've highlighted here, sell the Carpenter Building, sell the Nettie Marshall Building. You know, one thing we did talk about was reducing our footprint and by selling these buildings that we are vacating, we can reduce our footprint. Not only are, are we possibly adding buildings back to this tax roll, but we are relieving our maintenance department from maintaining and maintaining those buildings and the grounds as well as the physical buildings. So we, we have options in the future to look at to continue to address our overruns in our bond budget.
Ms. Barbara, thank you so much for preparing those options and took them out in front of us. I, I would feel at this time, while I, you know, while I appreciate putting those on the table for discussion, it's probably, and my thought is a little early.
Yes, yes, I, I don't intend for us to discuss that at this time, just, I'm just putting it out there.
Wonderful, thank, and thank you for that. I think we need to, to know that those options exist. Any other thoughts? Any other questions for Ms. Barbara regarding the budget?
Thank you, Mr. Barbara.
You're welcome.
Does that conclude your presentation?
That concludes our presentation, Mr. Martin, is there anything further you have?
Nothing, nothing further, Dr. Rio, thank you.
Thank you for. That's our presentation to you and we'll be able to entertain any questions that you may have.
One last call for questions regarding the bond update.
Well, I'd just like to make a comment of the fact we made, you know, we have a big, big puzzle that we have to put together. I think pieces are falling into place. I think that the administration has done a fantastic job of keeping us posted. I think if more members, we just need to look down the future and see how we can make all this happen and know that our superintendent is still and doing work to make sure all this is staying there, but I appreciate that.
All said, I appreciate it.
And for, for those joining us via Zoom, this is an update that we've requested on a quarterly basis. So we'll, we'll have another update probably early July or so. And we'll have a probably even more clearer picture of where we stand with Carpenter.
Mr. Martin, can we make sure the updated photos and information that we presented is on website? So any parents that may have a question, they can see the most latest updated information on construction updates.
Yes, sir, we will post them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That brings us to our final item on the agenda today, item five, and I will open the floor for a motion.
I'm moving, we adjourn.
Thank you, Mrs. Winslow, do we have a second?
Well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Matoya. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you all for your time today.